Certified compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raisler.
Here.
Councilmember Stokfield.
Here.
Councilmember Wyden Beck.
Here.
I'll send some questions.
Next we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make motion, adopt the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. It's adopted. Next we move on to public comments. The floor is open for anybody from the public that would like to speak on a subject that's on the agenda or something else. Please identify yourself for the record.
I am Julie Bauer. Some of you council members are probably tired of hearing from me, but in an effort to make this dog park issue happen, to accommodate those who want it, to keep our community in cohesion, we've come up with another idea that I would like to present to you. I know I had been on the table once to consider the recycling center out at Wabik, whatever you want to call it, Gil Blanville. We would like the committee to consider that as an option, and we found a lot of reasons why it would be a good idea. One of the best ideas, well, let me back up. I'm sending around things I've written, and Dan gave a visual of what that property looks like from Google Earth. One of the things that we think we should consider using that as a site, which I should, is that it can't really be used for any kind of other building development. A lot of cities, including Monomie, Dade County, Madison, Altoona, I saw on the Internet was considering it, I don't know what they decided. Amherst has one. If it's, it's an area that could be used for recreation because it can't be a building development. One positive of that is it could be called the community dog park. We share a lot of resources in this community. Schools, sports, churches. We're a rural community that we've been cooperating with smaller, joining towns to our area for many years, and I think that is a cool thing, that we would have a community dog park. And invite other people, Arkansas, O'Galli, Plum City, to come to this location. So I think that could be a really good thing to build some community spirit, having more people use it. If the landfill is properly capped, it's not a problem for dogs to run on it. My understanding is it needs to be mowed anyway. Dog owners would need to transport their dog to that site, but from what I understand, most of the people who have need of a dog park are not in the neighborhood of Hanson Park, and they have to transport their dogs anyway. So one mile versus four miles, you still have to get the dog in your car. I don't see that that makes a big deal of difference. I think that more space could make it a better location. There's more inquiry out there. More space for parking, there's sun and shade. According to the visual, there's still trees out there, and a lot of it is open sun. So there might be room for other amenities to be added in the future, and it could be a beautiful community resource. The only drawback is, yeah, they have to drive a little further, but I think it could be developed to be an even better park. We know people in the Madison area, and a lot of their dog parks are quite big, and some of them have been built on old landfills, I think. To accommodate that, according to Dan's visual, it looks like it could be easily accommodated by moving the cardboard recycling to a different part, moving the gate back, and that a road could be made along that borderline to access the area that's not being used by the recycling center. So it's something to consider. One other thing I'd like to mention regarding the Hanson Park location that has been on the table for quite some time. Yes, the neighborhood has been trying to preserve that as a park for all people, including people with dogs if they're leashed. We talked to an engineer at the Park C, and that is the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission. The Madison area has a commission that is trying to protect the environment while development is being made in the city, and they recommend that Hanson Park be left as a green space park for housing development. A lot of the trends in the larger cities is to have a green space park in residential area to accommodate recreation and protecting the environment, keeping our trees, keeping some of our wildlife in our residential developments. So they were quite concerned when I told them what could happen. They thought it should be preserved as is, with maybe walking trails, nature trails, open to all people, but not to be roped off for just dogs in a certain area. So that's kind of our thoughts, just kind of trying to help out by throwing out another idea that we think might be something to consider.
Thank you. So again, the floor is open for any public comment. Is there any other public comments? There are none. We'll move on to scheduled appearance. The one thing about it, you know, we have a lot of people who have worked for the city over the years and done a great job, and we always like to take a few minutes to recognize those efforts. So it's my pleasure tonight to honor a recent retiree, and the only people who are scared about that are the fish in the waters around here, and so on. So Steve, would you come on up? And of course, Steve worked in our Streets Public Works Public Utilities Department, so on and so forth, so I'd like, on behalf of myself, the council, and the city of Duran, presented to Steve Gilbertson an appreciation of 12 years of service to the city of Duran and Public Works, 2010 to 2022. So again, we love just a little thing, appreciation, put it on your wall for your time and efforts, and all your great service to the city of Duran.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big speech?
Yeah, a big speech. One thing I was able to achieve here in the city that nobody else has ever been able to do since I've been here, is I was able to salt and sand the sidewalk and the street at the same time. And the other thing I could never figure out is my snowplow route was on the mayor's...
Yes, it was. You'd be out there in the morning.
All the times I would plow that, he never understood how the problem was. I never could figure it out.
Sure. Again, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for Parker Schneider. Recognition for the WIA Division III Track and Field Championships. The following, a memorial proclamation recognizing Parker Schneider for the first three gold, three first place medals at the WIA Division III Track and Field State Championship. Whereas, the Duran High School track and field team competed in the WIA Division III State Track and Field meet on Friday, June 3, 2022, and Saturday, June 4, 2022. Whereas, the result of said track meet, Parker Schneider captured first place in the boys' 800-meter run, and whereas, Parker Schneider also placed first in the 1600-meter run, and whereas, Parker Schneider also placed first in the 3200-meter run, and whereas, Parker Schneider is the first six-time individual state champ in Duran High School history. Whereas, the mayor and the city council wish to recognize this accomplishment and congratulate Parker Schneider for this exemplary feat. Now therefore, I Patrick J. Milligan, by virtue of the authority invested in meet as the mayor of the city of Duran, and with the common council of the city of Duran, Pepin County, State of Wisconsin, with the majority of its members elected, thereto concurring that one, appreciation is expressed toward Parker, the dean, the coaches, for their positive representation of the Duran community. And section two, the resident city of Duran incurs to congratulate Parker on his accomplishment passed on this day, the 27th of July, 2022. Would somebody like to make a motion to confer this proclamation?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and second to confer this proclamation for Parker Schneider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. It is. Parker, if you'd come up, please. Again, you've been up here a few times with us, and so on, but again, congratulations. Obviously, a wonderful high school career and everything you've accomplished. We also wish you the best of luck in your next adventures. You go off and run a little D1 at Boston University out on the East Coast. So if he comes back with that Mayor Quimby sounding voice when he comes back, but again, we wish you the best of luck, and again, congratulations on all your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to the consent agenda. The fabric matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items, which any member wishes to address in greater detail, as a separate item on the regular agenda, may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting from July 13, 2022. Bartender's license for Elizabeth J. Wheeler for Bodie Saloon, and Austin D. Jamison for the Duran Travel Stop.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Approved. Next, move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. Obviously, music in the park tonight. If you get the opportunity to go over and do that, Two Friends Up is our entertainment. Always a great, it looked like quite a few people already over in the park. Just a reminder, of course, Blues is coming up a week from this weekend. It looks like the lineup, everything's all set to go. And again, it's a great event, brings in a lot of out-of-town folks, and so it's a real big tourism boost for us, so looking forward to the Blues Fest coming up. And also, just a reminder, the clerk handed this out, league conferences in lacrosse this year. Anybody who's interested in attending, make sure you tell Angie about it, we can get you on the list, so on. It's the one conference that we do go to, that you're obviously, everybody's invited to attend. As we said, there's always some good things to pick up, make some connections, learn what other communities are doing, and some great speakers, workshops, and everything that's going on. But again, so we can get our reservations in, let's make sure the clerk knows, and you should want to know by...
Before the next council meeting.
Before the next council meeting. And so, okay. That's all I've got. We didn't move anything off the consent agenda. Administrator's report. Administrator Rasmussen.
Couple short things as well. Did have the chance to, I was invited to a meeting with, remember, Mark Talman? Mark is our regional Wisconsin Economic Development Director. He had a meeting that he was conducting with some folks at the county, and they invited me over as well last week. So it's good touching base with Mark, and updating what programs they still have available to us, and knowing that he's good contact. So we talked a little bit about the Quick Trip project again, talked about Family Dollar General, we've done that quite a few times, and some other projects that are potentially out there, so I get good connecting with him, and I thank the county for inviting me along to that. We talked at the last council meeting that we had not heard a whole lot from Quick Trip. Obviously, they are up and running again. Again, it's no surprise to anyone that's, frankly, we're not going to have a whole lot of contact with them at the city level. I know Matt will be, he's going to get you for that, Matt will be contacting them, making sure that they're complying with some of the city standards for utilities and things of that nature. But otherwise, they know what they're doing, and they do it very well. And so again, we anticipate that they will be up and running just by their December 1st deadline, just like they said from the start. Part of the reason I don't have a whole lot here tonight is I haven't spent a whole lot of time in the office since our last meeting. Some of that was good, my son got married. Some of it not so good, you know, my father-in-law, Larry Gruber, passed away recently. I want to thank a number of people in this room for their kind words and cards and thoughts and prayers, and from the Gruber family, so thank you for that.
Any questions for the city administrator? Next, we move on, public safety. Police Department, anything else?
The scan did not have anything other than we are slated to meet with the Group for Blues, the, for the open intoxication, open intoxication, Ken's, oh, I'm wrong. Double rusty here. Just our standard meeting that we have before all the events, and again, I just take the time to, we always thank those groups that show up because we haven't had hardly any issues in the past events, so it's really more of a thank you. And again, if there's anything more that the city can do, or to make things a little more smooth, that's all we're going to say, it'll be next Tuesday morning at 9:00, I think, so get the word out there.
National Night Out's Tuesday, too.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Thank you, Matt. National Night Out is also Tuesday night. John, Sergeant Shulford was in earlier, asking some questions, we're looking at some pieces there, so thank you for the reminder on that as well. It's always a great ground, and great for the kids in the community.
And again, what time is that starting at?
5:00.
5:00.
5:00, okay. I was thinking she'd be here.
Yes, yes.
But again, nice event, right up at the ballroom, Sports Complex, and again, a lot of things for the kids especially, but then a lot of people, I enjoyed it, had a good time there, talking with a lot of different folks last year. But again, always a great event, and a lot of community support to do that. Anything else from Jamie?
No, no, no updates. Jamie wasn't around for, as you think, he mentioned that on the roll fire meeting, I was not either, so no updates from anything.
That's okay. Anything with ambulance?
Nothing from the ambulance. And then we have, as Mike noted, last time, we have a number of new personnel that are up and running, so that's great. Kudos to Mike for some of his recruiting efforts and making those calls.
Public Works Utility Engineers Report. Russ?
Yes, quick update, 2021 project closeout. We talked last time on the dryer street, Blanville, with Skidster Guy. Thought we had another punchless item, that there's sanitary sewer connection at Lee Street. We pulled up the completed project sanitary sewer televising videotapes, and actually found just upstream of that connection, a large root ball or a large piece of debris inside the pipe. So Matt's working with his sewer running cleaning contractor to come in and pull up that piece of debris. Not a punchless item on Skidster Guy, as we originally thought.
Is it in newer pipe or...?
The old existing.
It was in an existing pipe.
It was about four or five feet past the connection, the old existing pipe.
That's...
It's past it. It's unfortunate, too, when they made that connection, if they would have just looked up there, they probably could have saw it and pulled it out with a shovel or a piece, you know, a piece of stick or something like that. On that one, so everything's complete with the punchless item, so again, we're still waiting for the final pay request. Same thing on A1 excavating on the Thurgav project, continue to contact A1 and submit a final pay request on that project, so we can close it out. So hopefully, we'll have something submitted here on this campaign meeting, so we'll keep after them. They have a sizable retainer, I think they want to retain it at some point.
Is that, Russ, is that when the one year starts, is when we pay the...
Yep, exactly.
Or two starts?
Two doesn't start till the final pay request, so that's just, it's a benefit of the city, Any other questions? That's all I have tonight.
Any questions for city engineer? There are none. Our monthly report, Public Works Utilities, Superintendent Gillis?
Just a couple of quick things. We did get rid of that root mass. Staff went up with the vector truck, and roots on, saw it open, and everything's back to working, working on it, so that was taken care of shortly after we saw the video. One thing, seal coating starts next week. We're seal coating country length this year. I'll know for sure a little more tomorrow into Friday, but we're anticipating Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning, they'll be in the city seal for all the country length. Guys are prepping it, getting it ready to go, so it'll be loose gravel up there for a couple weeks after the seal coating. Other than that...
Full length?
Full length, yeah, from F to W. Other than that, everything's pretty routine in my department, other than the next IFR agenda.
Okay. Any questions for Public Works Utilities? Next, we move on. Discussion, possible action regarding awarding bids for the Duran Pool Replacement Project. As everybody was given a heads up, plans are changing a little bit because of the bidding process and the bids for, especially specific for the aquatics part of this. And it was, we were in a situation, we knew we were on a pretty, we were on a tight, pretty aggressive schedule, and what we basically found out was that we didn't have people that were going to bid on the pool park. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt and get him started, and then we'll have the opportunity to have US Aquatics and Cedar Corp. talk a little bit about where we're at and where we'd like to go forward.
Yeah, just quick before my update, Rick Schaefer from US Aquatics is here, sitting next to us, so if we have any more questions, too, we can talk to Rick. He's our, he's the president and the head of our, head of our design team here for US Aquatics, too. As things change daily in bid processes, last week, Thursday into Friday, we had roughly seven to 10 pool aquatics companies that were looking at bidding this project. All of them had, all of them took out plans, looked at the plans, liked the project, but as of late last week, they all said that they would not bid it, they would not be able to bid it because the work schedule, they cannot fit it in. They cannot do the work schedule from this fall into June of next year. All of them said the same thing. So what we decided to do quick was make an amendment to push the bid process back, push the bid opening date back two weeks to give us time to formulate options and formulate a plan, what we wanted to do to try to get these aquatics and companies to bid on the project. Without, without the aquatics companies, we don't have a project, right? We even, we got site people, we got building people, but without the aquatics, that's the main reason we're doing it. So Rick has been in contact with all these aquatics companies. We came up with a couple different timelines that he has talked to them with, and what we are presenting tonight is in front of you, that essentially, we pushed this construction project back one year. We still bid it, so the bids will still be due on the 9th of August this year, and that bid will hold true, but the construction will not start essentially until August next year into substantial completion, May 28, final completion, June 4 of 2024. We have talked to these companies, we gave them another, with this option, we've been told that we could get roughly about five of these companies would bid on the project with this schedule. Is that still accurate numbers?
I have confirmation.
Good. We also did a schedule where, with this current schedule, we can still try, knock on wood, try to get a June and a July swim season like we did this year. We did talk about a schedule where we started in April and just had no swim season, and construction ended in September, and we had one company that was, that was marginally thinking about bidding that. So the majority of these companies are saying fall of 2023, or even sprint of 2024 before they'll bid, because they're just that busy. Anything I missed, Rick?
No, unless anybody's got a question about why we continue to bid now, and the answer is that we want to try to capture the pricing that they're looking at today. They're going to market a little bit up in anticipation of costs a year out, but that puts the risk on their side, not on you in waiting.
And also, what we can do by bidding now, and if we were to award, depending on how the bids came in, they can order product at today's price, and then we can come up with a storage, you know, for some of the pool filters and pool pumps and some of that type of stuff. Electricians can get all their stuff ordered and get it in, which I am hearing is close to a year out on some electrical gearing and things like that anyway. So it is still advantageous to us to bid it this year yet, even though you're not going to start construction until next year.
My biggest question is about the funders, and they were, seemed pretty, pretty black and white when they won, if this thing, is that going to change their...
Yeah, clearly, we have not talked to them yet. One of the funders is, I mean, one of the big pieces, the money's already in the bank. But from the standpoint of, I think the important thing to note is, as Matt has said a couple times here already, is, you know, this is, this was, you know, Frank, there's no errors here on our part. This is just, these companies, these limited, roughly 10 big contractors in the upper Midwest that do these jobs are just so busy that they're not even going to bid. So I mean, we don't have any choice. I mean, there just is nothing we can do. So I'm, I'm going to think that...
Our hands being, of course, that's the way I look at it, and I'm disappointed. I think most people understand, and again, if you can't get them in. And the problem is, is that had we gone forward, and we would have had no aquatics bids, and just the other ones, we're basically going to have to completely go back, and we're checked everything.
Then we would have, you know, there's cost in the bidding process again, too, so that's why we pushed it back two weeks, so that we could, we won't have to rebid everything all over again.
And then you have the, this change in the schedules add enough to qualify for rebid. You've got, depending on which city attorney I talk to, there's different implications, so this really simplifies it. And it gets us, it gets you on the queue. You know somebody's going to be available, but they're taking the rest, they all fill up again.
I guess I'm just, I guess my concern is, you know, all points are leading to a recession. If we would wait till a bid later, don't you think we would get better pricing?
That's one of the questions that I've posed to many people in the industry. A couple of project managers that have done a lot of both projects, architects, and the contractors. One contractor said that they feel that pricing is, the steady incline is slowing. They think it's going to stabilize. Couple of constructor brokers, one said, you know what, prices are just going to go up. One thought is that the reason, construction costs are only at about 50% or so, give or take, while you're paying two to three times for gas and groceries and everything else, is because of how much labor costs there is in construction, and the labor's not yet catching up the rest of it. So the fear is that if all the material costs even slow down, labors might catch up to that. So if we, if you get the pricing now, that's locked in, no matter what it takes from the bit of labor, so.
One of the things we talked about this morning, which was a real concern of mine, and we addressed it to a degree on the number three of the bid award, no later than 60 days, which is a little farther out, is, you know, from the standpoint of, like Rick indicated, that current pricing, what you're seeing now is 5 to 20%...
Correct.
Over budget.
Correct. So we based, we had just read on your estimate in May, as we're leading up to this. So it was updated as of May, and trying to estimate where pricing has been since then, yeah, it's a range, right? I can't get tighter than that right now. You know, we just, we used to be able to say within 5%, or even 3%, and we can't get within 1%.
So just, let's just say it's 10%. It comes in 10%, that's $300,000 over our $3 million budget. So when we open those bids on the 9th, if it comes in at that, we have some time to do some discussion of how are we going to potentially raise, or how are we going to get another $300,000? Whether it's raised from private donors, whether it's talking internally, that the city kicks in more, and things of that nature, but that gives us a little more time before we have to accept these bids.
And I know it gets marginal, but we want to make sure that we're adding a percentage only to the construction costs and not the whole project costs.
Correct.
Our professional fees and other things, those are all guests, those aren't me.
So it gives us time to go start through those details, so we can get you folks informed, okay, this is what we're looking at, and, you know, do we commit to these bids even though it might be over budget? And, you know, can we come up with that?
Because we would run this situation had we, had we opened the bid yesterday. Because we would have been in this situation had we, had we opened the bid yesterday, and let's say there would have been a couple of pool companies in there, and it would have been a percentage over, we still would have had to look at the, the whole situation if we were over budget and how we can handle it. And again, we always figured that we, we have some leeway in there, of course, we always go a little extra, do you make that margin a little tighter that, on contingency and do you cut a few things out? I mean, we would have been in that mode anyway, had they all, had we come in 10% over, you know?
It's likely that what would happen, and contractors get tight lipped, so I get good contractors to get this much information out of them, it's possible that one of them may have put a bid in and increased the price by enough to cover him giving up the bond of another project to do this one for a bigger profit, I've seen that. And, and that's a substantial pricing, they're asking you to just throw in another half million dollars just to get them to do it, you know, so it's, it's possibly something like that, and it would have been in a worst case scenario, because now you have a bid, which is harder to rebid than a no bid scenario. So it's, it's better to do it this way.
See, Russ, I talked to one of the contractors who did plant holders list, and maybe it's just Minnesota, but he talked like they were getting a lot of grants for pools through that COVID stuff.
Or we've seen it, I think the grant writers have been mostly involved, so I haven't been involved in, in that.
I can check, we haven't heard anything with the bill program.
The list of those, I can show you which one, I can't think of their name right now.
I stay super involved in grant stuff for COVID, and I don't recall seeing anything that went on.
They're so rare for public, public works, public works, you know, these type of parks recreation type thing, now whether or not those are, you know, grants that they're getting from their counties, for example, or, or cities allocating the dollars.
That's what I, that's what I mean, I don't know if it's Minnesota or state feeling, you know?
That, that could potentially be.
Because I, out of all the research I've done in Wisconsin from a state and federal program, there is no grant money for swimming pools in Wisconsin, and, yeah, so I don't know, again, too, that maybe that's not even a municipal job, maybe it's a, a community or a, you know, something that, like you said, the local county art bow or state art bow or something is giving the money for.
And we've discussed a little bit here that, you know, Chippewa Falls is going through a similar, that they're looking to close their pool because they can't afford anymore. I don't recall reading any article there that they were pursuing state grants because I just don't think they're out there, not for this type of project.
No, and as far as I know, the only grants they're getting are related to other safety, energy, you know, other things, and this, one of these projects have to qualify.
Well, he, he made it sound like it was a recreation because of the COVID and everybody being, you know?
Governor Walz may have done something like that, but the majority, what we see out too often is there's all these stimulus programs, the first two pieces to get cut out is highway beautification and parks, all was the first items to get cut out of those.
Well, he listed off a few, so I can let you know.
He has some grant writers over there, I do know that.
So Russ, on the civil side, as far as the schedule, what, what you're feeling about?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Do you think, I mean, do you think, I think it gets, gets more bidders maybe?
Yeah.
Especially on the schedule.
And we, yeah, it's, you know, probably we'll get a few more, we've got quite a bit of plant holders and site civil, local bidders that are intending on bidding the project already, so, and extending it, might get a few more that are, that are busy yet this fall.
So the contractors that?
They can look at it in spring, next, next.
They've got to rebid.
Nobody's bid.
Yeah, nobody's bid at all.
So the way that, usually on these public bid openings, nobody brings their bid in until about the last half an hour, you know? So what happens here is we make an amend, we make an amended, so everything goes out on, on Quest and out on exchanges, and when you pull plans, you get email addresses and everything, whenever there's an amended amendment, that all gets emailed out to everybody that pulled plans. So as of Friday, when we made this amendment, everybody got a mass email that pulled a set of plans that now knows the bid went from, from Tuesday the ninth or Tuesday the 19th.
They got this.
Yeah, they got that, they didn't get that, this is just tonight.
They got a temporary, all of them.
Alls we did is moved the bid date from Tuesday to August 9th.
But if, if we approve this new schedule, they'll get this.
Yep, the next step would be another agenda.
Yeah, what you have in front of you is exactly what would go on in the commitment.
So we make a fourth amendment with the work schedule that you see in front of you.
And I, I did hear from one of the contractors, it's been more forthcoming, he was actually really excited, he said this actually just became an extremely attractive project, one additional contractor that's not on the plant holders list is now willing to be on the plant holders list, some of them tend to kind of stay in the background, they don't want to be on there, but another one stepped up and said, he'd be in, and, and they said there was like, up to 10, there was one that I just, I wasn't sure who they were, but got a button, everything in my industry, I understand that there's something happening, got ahold of me this morning, and said now they want to be added to the, they're submitting the information to be added as a pre-approved pool contractor, so that makes six pre-approved to a project, pre-approved and interested, and then a couple that are full counter somewhere.
I received an email today too, from one of our preferred municipal contractors, that looks like they're going to be looking at it now too, for the site work.
So we really need to approve this, is what?
Yeah, well, because we have an agenda, they don't basically say what we're, what we're on the bids, instead of awarding the bids, what we're doing is we would have a motion to approve this. So again, any other questions for either engineering firm, for staff, let's, do you see any questions, and then if somebody wants to move forward with a motion on this?
Yeah, I guess I would say too, I think we need an official motion to essentially rubber stamp what staff already decided to do by pushing it out in two weeks, so that's all good, and then a new timeline, so it's kind of a two-part.
So motion to push the bid opening until August 9th?
Correct, we're affirming essentially what, what staff has already done because we didn't really have a choice.
I'll make a motion, we push the bid opening to August 9th second?
We have a motion and second to push out till August 9th, the bid on the community pool project. Is there any more, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? Could any of the city will call?
I think so.
Okay, so then the second part of it is the new work schedule as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the new work schedule on the Durant Community Pool Replacement Project as, uh, and, oh, yes.
As presented.
As presented, the new work schedule.
Second.
Do we need to make that contingent on approval of the donors? I mean, if we have a donor come back and say we're, for whatever reason, we're now pulling our money, we might not be able to proceed.
We're probably dead in the water, at least temporarily, so, and, I mean, to your question, I think it's fair to say that Mayor and I can talk, and somebody will need to get ahold of the donors tomorrow, some of the people that we have in mind, just to clarify, and, and the pool group as well.
Oh, I'm okay with that contingency.
Okay, was there actually a second?
Next second.
We had a second, okay. Any more discussion concerning the new work schedule concerning the pool?
So we're motion second for this contingent on, someone to be being aware of it.
I think you can't against, basically, if they fly out, say then it's moved, but at this point.
Yeah, because then we could deal with that at a different, I mean, we're going to move forward with this, but again, again, we could turn around and, you know, and we want to continue to move forward, and we would hope that everybody would understand why we're doing this.
I have to imagine they're going to understand that.
Yeah, you know?
And I think more of their issue was they didn't want an actual, to lose the season, so.
That was very important, our discussion this morning.
And that's why, that's why we went with this schedule, it helped with what our donors requests were, and also give us the, what we can feel is the most bidders.
Yeah, because we were still feeling as if we just sent sands on next year, try to, you know, start bidding in, or start building in May, or, as you said, it didn't seem like we were going to get a lot of bidders for that schedule.
And just keep in mind, this is solely the aquatics bidders, not building in sight.
Although obviously those bidders are coming.
They all rolling together over that.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? Is it approved? Okay, next we move on, we have another proclamation, we did do a little later on that, a proclamation for Kendall Hagnus, recognition for the WI Division III State and Field, State Championships. A mayoral proclamation recognizing Kendall Hagnus for?
Oh, you left the three out, I'm going to have to correct that.
No, well, for?
You said not three, first one.
Don't worry. For Division, her three, yeah, anyway. Whereas, whereas, the Durant High School Track and Field Team competed in the WI's Division III State Track Meet, Track and Field Meet on Friday, June 3rd and Saturday, June 4th, 2022, and whereas, as a result of said track and field tournament, Kendall Hagnus captured first place in the girls 100 meter race, and whereas Kendall Hagnus also placed second in the 200 meter race, and whereas Kendall Hagnus also placed seventh in the 400 meter race, and whereas, the mayor and the city council wished to recognize this accomplishment and congratulate Kendall Hagnus for this exemplary feat, now therefore I, Patrick J. Milliron, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Durant and with the common council of the city of Durant, Pepin County, State of Wisconsin, with the majority of its members elected hereto, concurring that, section one, appreciation is expressed toward Kendall Hagnus, the team, the coaches, for their positive representation of the Durant community, and section two, the residents of city Durant are encouraged to congratulate Kendall on her accomplishment passed this day, the 27th day of July 2022. Would somebody like to make a motion to concur with this proclamation?
So moved.
We have a motion and second to concur with the proclamation, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? It is approved. Kendall, you would like to come up, please, we'd like to present you with this? And again, now Kendall's only a junior, going to be a senior, so she's got a lot more opportunity to win a lot more for us, for the community and so and so forth, so congratulations, and you're wonderful, and we do look forward to more accomplishments here, your career at Durant High School. Thank you. Yeah, we're good. We're good, it's, we're just going to change a little bit the headline.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Next we have closed session, the council convened in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 1985-1C and Wisconsin State Statutes 1985-1A for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, a performance evaluation data, and further for considering a financial, medical, social, personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems or the investigation of charges against specific, except where power were applied to, if discussed by the public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referring to such histories or involved in any such problems, investigations, for any employer of city council, and so on, the discussions and convene for the purpose of the annual performance evaluation of the city administrator. Would somebody like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go into closed session, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker?
Yes.
Councilmember Spolfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Waisa Back?
Yes.
Councilmember Nuss.